We'll bring the Superbord of Education Red Door meeting to order Monday, October 11th, 2020, minus seven PM. Members present are David, Brett, Kenny, Jennifer, and Susie. This time we move on to Pledge of Allegiance and prayer by Ms. Olivia Odom.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Laura, pray that you watch our reading today and you guide their words and you guide them throughout their day. Please bless their choices that they're about to make today. And more blessed are all these beautiful girls for being here today and looking so pretty. Please bless them and watch over their words and just make sure everyone's has a safe trip home tonight. We're decent and well grown. Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Olivia.
Yes.
I want to say that a little bit.
That's why I'm so excited.
Okay, this time we move on to a presentation by Mrs. Aspen Wick. She's the FCLA sponsor and some of her students.
Okay, girls, be ready. Okay, so first we're going to hear from Pause for a Cause. So that is Ms. Taylor Sharkey, Ms. Karyana Paulson, and Ms. Jamie Beller. So you guys can go ahead and stand up if you want to go stand in front of them. Have a little display board. Just stand for everybody who wants to connect to their board.
Hello, my name is Jamie Beller and we are excited to share with you tonight our star event, Pause for a Cause. Pause for a Cause is a week-long benefit that helps bring awareness and funding animal rescues around Haskell County. All Haskell County rescues are nonprofit. Animal rescues funded solely by donations. Each of these rescues are in desperate need of foods, funds, and public support.
Hello, my name is Karen Paulson. Our week-long event would highlight a different animal within animal rescue stadium. The animal would have a feature on the TV screens at the high school. Throughout the week of October, the 18th through the 22nd, we will be accepting donations like food, toys, treats, beds, puppy pads, and sanitary items to the shelter. Each person who donates will receive a bag of puppy towel as a thank you for their efforts. We will also be selling t-shirts. These are the t-shirts. This is the back of the t-shirt. And it's going to be a pocket t-shirt and this is going to be on the pocket. And we are going to be selling them for $20. Half of the profits from each shirt will be donated to animal rescue around the Haskell County area at the end of the week.
I'm going to show the audience on October 22nd at 4:00 PM. And the area rescuers will join us at the high school campus while behind the bed room.
Can you speak up just a little bit?
During this event, me and members of FAMAS will have the opportunity to be available animals to the FCLA members at our cost. FCLA will provide baskets of puppy towel and refreshments for this event. The event will last around two hours with the animal rescues without seeing one donation during the night. It may be truly believed that this event will have positive effects on both humans and animals and for consideration.
Do you have any questions for them about the event? So again-
How do we order the t-shirts?
Yes, okay, so we brought you some order forms. They are due by Friday, which I know is super early, but that's so we can get them turned around for the event. But we brought you some order forms. Like she said, have to proceed to go to the animal shelters. We are splitting them between the two animal shelters in town and both have agreed to bring their animals out on Friday, the 22nd. And News Channel 6 has actually agreed to come out if it's approved, so I'm a little nervous. So maybe we'll think about that. But we're very excited about it. They're going to bring all the animals out. We're going to give them the check and the donations at that time. They're very excited to meet the community. So those are the shirts and that's the flyer that Ms. Karyana created. She's kind of a whiz with flyers. And then the other girls we're talking about is October. And then this is Boo Graham's for the elementary school. And unfortunately, our girl who was supposed to talk about that can't be here. She had an infected lymph node. But Boo Graham's is something we started with the elementary school and essentially they can order treats for homecoming week that are spooky treats. And the FCLA has decided to donate the costs for the students whose parents didn't order for them. So everyone will get a treat. Very fun.
This is the puppy towel that we're going to be giving out.
Yes, they brought you samples.
Oh, thank you so much.
Perfect.
I see you.
Yeah.
Some of my favorite.
He looks like people.
Okay, my Socktober girls, you ready?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And then the last presentation you're going to be hearing is these girls for their star event are doing Socktober and they're very excited to talk to you about that.
Thank you.
I say they're very excited. They might be more nervous.
Hi, my name is Skylar Shalins.
Janelle Hurst.
And Chloe Bush. And we are so excited to talk to y'all about our national program for this year, which is community service. And for one of our star events that we've chose for this year is Socktober. So Janelle's going to tell me all a little bit about that.
So Home-based Services is now assisting 101 kids in the High School County area. These kids are in desperate need of a product we take for granted each day, socks. For our national program, we have chosen to do a sock drive. We have teamed up with the elementary school to donate socks in these boots. We will have each bin at the certain grade where we can place new packets of socks into. The sock drive will be October 12th through 30th. We really hope you will consider doing this for us. We would appreciate your consideration of our community service project and we hope that through our efforts, the community and Stigler can develop and build up their things on.
You're doing great. Keep going. Keep rolling.
Sure, yeah.
Community.
Yes, yeah. Go community. Go Panthers. Yes.
Let's go.
Yes.
Of course.
Thank you.
Thank you, girls.
So much.
Okay, so do you have any questions for them on Socktober? Our goal is 202 pairs of socks so that every one of those kids will go home with two new packages of socks. So that's our goal. And then the grade that donates the most will earn themselves a pizza slash ice cream party depending on what the future prefers. And then we will leave this board with you so you can look at everything when you make your decisions. But I think that's everything they had to say. Yeah, Chloe?
Yeah.
Good, okay. Thank you guys so much for listening today.
Yeah, anytime.
You got a t-shirt form?
We do, yes. And by forms, I mean one. Yes, but we love photo copies, yes.
I will just leave that with Susie.
Oh, no, I'll leave it with people, yes. Of course, you guys, thank you guys so much.
Guys, if you want to stay, you're welcome to. And if you want to, you know, dismiss yourself.
I think we'll get out of your hair. Thank you so much.
It's up to you.
We got to get them to their ag practice. They have a competition tomorrow for opening ceremonies. We got to get them to practice.
Nice.
Thank you, Olivia.
Beautiful, too.
Thank you.
All right, this time we move on to the approval of minutes for special meetings September 16th, 2021.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion made by Brett, seconded by David. Was Brett and David the only two that were here and me?
Yes.
Okay. Motion made by Brett, seconded by David to approve the minutes.
Yes.
I know, but I need you. Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Next day.
Next day. This time we move on to the approval of encampments and change orders as listed.
Okay, first page starts with PO 216. And the first one is Stigler Printing, $2,400. That's a little more than we're going to need. And what we're doing is, Stigler Printing is producing. It was going to be wrapped for the tunnels. And one of the tunnels was wrapped in black. We weren't real favorable towards that. So he produced one and then Linus came to me and said, I think we'll be better off if you guys have time to just paint those tunnels bright white and I can create the letter. Because most of the wrap was white. So it's going to end up costing us instead of $2,400, about $800 to wrap all four of those tunnels with school wording and that kind of thing. It's going to look really nice.
What tunnels?
Oh, I'm sorry. That go down into the dressing rooms.
Okay.
Yeah, on each corner of the jeep. So kind of dress them up. Next, if you look at 219 through 221, those are ag supplies coming out of Mr. Dawson's program's money. Look on down to 227, nonviolent crisis intervention, $1,409. During our last in-service, one of the trainings was, we call it CPI training. It's basically training on how to restrain and how to deal with situations that may occur. And Ms. Wanema Bush is certified to put that training on. And this money was each one has to have a workbook and then to get them certified in that training. So about roughly a third of our faculty went through that class, the last one, the 24th, and was trained in that CPI training. So then if you look at 230, PO 230, Legends hardwood, that's to redo. They're going to be coming to redo the finish on the gym floor. It's been a couple of years since we've had that done. 231, 232, that's those two trucks that we purchased, voted to purchase last board meeting from Brandon's Used Autos. And we have those on site using those now. 236 to David Morgan, that's reimbursement. We sent Dennis Wright. It was on a Friday night, on a game night. He went to Lowe's in Tulsa to purchase our lumber for our bridge, our composite lumber for the bridge. And we had a problem there with the Lowe's card. So I just got on the phone, giggle my devil card, and then that's reimbursement for that. 238 is our rooms for state cheer competition for the cheerleaders. They stayed on Friday night after the game and then went to the cheer competition that next day. 239 is room for Mr. Dr. Kettles. He's going to a workshop here in about a week. So that's rooming for him. 240, CDWG, this is Chromebooks and licenses. That's $66,765. And we have an action topic tonight on that. And what that is, is an E-Rate grant that we received. And part of that grant was $66,700 to purchase Chromebooks. And that's us purchasing that. And we've actually already received that E-Rate funding for that. 241 through, on down, actually all the way on the next page, we're sending, if you remember, we've talked about in the past, a classroom management workshop called Capturing Kids' Hearts. And we're sending 21 of our employees to Capturing Kids' Hearts workshops. There's a group going to Dallas on the 4th and 5th of November. That's a Thursday and Friday. And then another group going, they're leaving on that Sunday, and their workshop is on the 7th and 8th of November, just a couple of days later. And that allows us, we have a couple of football coaches that couldn't go on that first trip and couldn't the second. And we had basketball coaches just opposite there. So that allowed us to accommodate schedules there. But we have 21 total, basically, new employees that are going to that workshop. Now, and then the next page is just-
Ms. Morgan, 243, how come there's no flight travel? Some flying, some not?
Okay. Dallas, they're taking both Suburbans and they're driving to Dallas. And then Houston, they're flying southwest. It's about $96. And so that's just a long drive. So it was made sense to, well, it cost us $1,100 there. I think it's, there's 14 going to Dallas and seven to Houston. And then if you notice on the next page, it has all of their, for their travel reimbursement, as far as meals and stuff. I believe your next page, on the third page, should start up at the top. Is that a change order? Okay. This is, it starts with PO 70003. And these are change orders. The first one, that number three up the top, GS Grade School Certified Subs. We typically don't have certified subs, so they're setting aside some money. We have a sub working at the elementary with a four-year degree. So they're setting aside money for that person, for those people. I'm not sure if it's more than one to work this year. And then 119 through 331 there, that is the insurance for these new employees. If you look at payroll last month, that was not deductible. It started this month. So that's the POs for either cash in lieu of or insurance to be paid on those employees. And then at the bottom, 352, Superintendent Office Assistant. We have a student worker here in the superintendent's office. And that's to set aside funds to pay them for the school year. They work a couple hours a day. Next page is child nutrition. Those are pretty ordinary. Walmart is the note, number PO 23 to Walmart, $1,000. That's so Missy can go mainly and buy food products. We have a couple of students that are diabetic and a couple that are gluten intolerant, I guess you would say. And she's been going to Walmart. She can go and look on the shelf and pick out those items right now until we find a good menu for those students. So we've set aside that money in, for that purpose. Next page is, this is, we had to do a blanket PO for the year for Ms. Jennings' payroll for the remainder of the year. And that should be the only encumbrance on that page. Next page is the same, but it's a change order. So we had, where Ms. Hamblin already had a contract and we'd done a blanket on her payroll for the year. And we paid her a little bit additional to be Child Nutrition Director. We needed to do a change order on her payroll PO in order to reflect that. And then the other is Sherry Wright that works in the cafeteria. And this is her cost, just like the employees before. This is her cost for insurance or payroll. So that is the company.
Kenny, seconded by Jennifer to approve the encampments as listed. Kenny?
Yes.
With Shane's orders, sorry, Kenny. Jennifer, Brett?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. This time we move on to under financial reports.
Okay, and they're right up here. And we didn't put that in a perfect place. So as we have been doing traditionally now, if we look at our balances for the month, ending the month, in the general fund, we end the month with $1,899,772. Still the same right now in the building fund at $987,724. And then in child nutrition at $127,429. And then our bills for the month, if we look, and we're going to, we talked a little bit about this, and we have an extra that we wouldn't necessarily always have in salaries because of grants of about $19,000 a month. So if you just kind of each month, keep that in mind that we're receiving that grant money on that. So we come up here to September. This is probably, this will change a little bit, but this will start staying consistent throughout the year. And our base salaries, this is contracted salaries at $679,622 for September. Our extra salaries, 323. And one thing on this that I'm kind of watching is this 21st century. If you look at that, that, you know, we received $264,000 in that grant for this year. So salaries and everything involved, as far as salaries for that grant this month was 14.5. That after-school program last year, we were spending about $5,000 a month to man that. But this has counseling, teachers' aides, and all that to go along with it. So it's enhanced quite a bit for the reason for that increase in cost. So if this is not totally new, last year this amount would have been about $5,000 a month. So, but that actually, that goes into this extra. So that's kind of where we started at 14.5. And then the rest of that's overtime, that kind of thing. So that gave our total for the month of $711,966. As compared to last year, we were above this year, $17,900. So in salary, we're ahead because of the stipend was a big reason for that. We're ahead and we're behind in salary, $158,600. If we go down to bills for the month of September, our bills were $77,700 as compared to last year, $163,300. One of the reasons that was so high, if you remember last year, we bought, about this time, we bought band uniforms was one of the biggie. I think that was about $42,000, $45,000. But there was some cost in there. We had a savings this month of $85,500. So total savings on bills year-to-date, $246,900. So overall, right now, we're ahead $88,354. And that's kind of the thing that we're looking out after this year. We know this is going to be a little higher, but our revenues will be higher because of those grades going to be. But we want to try to offset a little bit of that as we can here to try to even things out. And right now, we're doing good with this number right here being ahead because we're trying to get to where, when the bill comes in for those buses, that we're close to even. So that's that for the month.
This time we move on to another comment. Board of Education about to have a comment at this point. We're meeting by comments concerning items and recording this with policy BED-R. No one present for that. Information items, superintendent's reports.
Okay, first of all, COVID numbers. We kind of started out with that for the last year, almost a year and a half. And we have, at the grade school, one student. And actually, in Stigler Public Schools, as of today, we have one student quarantined. And so that's one more than where we want to be. So that's very good. We have none right now, as of this morning, in the middle school and none at the high school. So that's, we're in good shape there as far as quarantines and isolations. Some of this you probably already know, but we're praying anyway. Our softball team won regionals this past weekend and kind of swept it. No losses all the way through regional. Some pretty exciting softball. If you like to watch softball, it's very, very good. I think I heard Ms. White yelling a few times on that field fence. So they play Thursday at 6:30 at Hall of Fame Stadium, and they play Long Grove. So we're looking forward to that. And I hear, I didn't understand this, but I hear it's the first time ever for Stigler High School softball to go to the state tournament. So that's a landmark achievement. Also, Thursday, you just have to pick, I guess, what we want to do, right? So we have senior night, Thursday night versus Palopos Sequoia. Senior night begins at 6:10. And then just FYI, on two weeks later, on the 29th, homecoming. Homecoming will also start at 6:10 on that Friday evening. Stigler High School Cheerleaders won second place in September at the regional competition. And then we're fifth place in the state, in the state cheerleading competition. So we're very proud of that. So we're on the right track. We graduated a great class of seniors last year, but this group of kids are just picking up right there and may surpass a lot of those achievements. Regional Band Competition coming up on October 20th at Otoka. That's next Wednesday. And they've had a lot of success so far this year at invitational contests. So we're looking forward to that. And then we have a one-act play contest, as we talked about, I think, last month, coming up. We're hosting that. And we're proud of that and getting ready for that event. September Professional Development Day was a success. On September 24th, we had a lot of good training that went on. And then we have another one scheduled for this Thursday. And we'll be in training during that day and try to give, and I think we'll be up plenty of time for people that are going to softball games, be able to take advantage of that. We have a crew today working on the, I guess they worked harder than they thought they were going to, right? People on the walking track. And the partners for the park, we talked about, been talking about it for a while, and people receive bids for us. So they're in there today and they took away all the grass that was growing over the walking track, took all the grass out of the cracks on the walking track, filling all those cracks in with tar, and then going over the whole track with a sealer. So we got that. That's a pretty big undertaking that's taking place there. So we're glad to have that done. And they were pretty quick when we could get out here, we get started getting them. So to have a chance, I don't know, we need to see the before and after. So it looks really good. I wouldn't walk on it. So, but we're proud of that. And then we had a video because some of the programs that we have in our school are things that we don't see every day. So one of the parts, and I don't even call it, most of the time when I'm talking to a parent, I don't say alternative school, or I don't say alt school because, or alt ed because sometimes that has a negative context. When you're talking to people, a lot of times you'll hear me, I'll say our evening program or something like that. So, but I wanted a few shots of this. And if you'll notice when it comes up in the video, you'll see them doing artwork and CPR and some different things. And a lot of these kids are challenged, and this is one of their last opportunities. But to watch them grab a hold of some of these programs and take advantage of it. And we- And we, oh, last year, or year before last, we had OSU Extension come in and do sewing, and I thought, are those boys? But you saw the picture, their heads down, they're over there, and then I come in the next day and they're, they're wanting to show me their pillows they made. So it has a pretty big impact on them. So we wanted to show you and then hear a little bit from those pictures.
A lot of the activities that we do in the Alt Ed program are very beneficial to the students in teaching life skills, life lessons, CPR training, that's one of them. Cooking, just being able to take care of themselves, take care of the family once they get out of school. So that, those would be some of the things that I would think are beneficial for our students. Some of our upcoming plans that we have for classes include cooking, budgeting, preparing for those meals, to go out to shop, have the appropriate things that you need to be able to feed your family, to be able to take care of yourself. And we have some fun activities, just cookie decorating that we're excited about, maybe even some we're excited about, maybe even some pumpkin carving, just for a fun activity for Halloween. So we have a lot of plans. Do you have any good things to participate in?
Working with Alt Ed students, we have the opportunity to see for one particular student that I can think of, when he first started with Alt Ed, was not interested in school, was very angry and defiant, did not do, would not work when he was prompted. And since that time, has matured and is more conscientious about his work and is excited, really, really excited about the extra opportunities, the extra curriculum classes that he gets to take through Alt Ed, the cooking and sewing, CPR classes, the different things like that that he gets to do. And so it's been really enlightening and exciting for us this summer night to watch this particular student, in particular, the growth that he's made over the last couple years.
A lot of the activities that we-
So that gives you a little, very little, that's short, but, but we're proud of, especially since we've started those electives and things that they can kind of grab a hold of, because a lot of times you put them in academics only and they don't sell. They need something to kind of, to kind of motivate them in that area. And see a lot of growth, a lot of change, a lot of times when they see there's somebody in there one-on-one that'll care about them. So we're proud of, proud of that growth. The superintendent.
All right, at this time, we move on to action topics. Action topic A, public area for the purpose of receiving government comment on past and future expenditures and post twenty-one, twenty-two operational budget or consideration to adopt the twenty-one, twenty-two operational budget as presented.
If, kind of show kind of how we, our budget last year and kind of how we, how it worked out, is we, we had our, our budget last year, you can't probably see this, I can barely see it. Our budget last year was eleven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-one dollars, and eleven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-one thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars. As we, and this was our last budget. We had to do both in child nutrition and general fund, we had to do a couple of amendments throughout the year. We foresee, and Melissa can probably attest to this, we can foresee because of just, this being an abnormal year in child nutrition and as many bills as were served, that we may have to amend this year or later in the year with child nutrition, because we just don't have a precedent to fall back on as far as this meal feeding program that we're on right now. But we, we were setting at a budget of eleven-eight, and then we ended up spending last year about ten-three. So that's about, kind of how that worked out for us last year. And if we look at those programs, most of those are, most of those figures down through, and if you can, if you look down through those categories and have any questions about what is the, what is this figure, or what is this, what is this category, just let me know. But this is the revenue or cost that we see for the year, and then down at the bottom, our budget in general fund is twelve million, six hundred and seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-three. And just to point out a few in that, if you look on down the list, five fifty-three, for example, is new money, that's our Twenty-First Century grant in the amount of two hundred and sixty-four thousand, that's new revenue coming in. If you look down at the bottom, it's seven twenty-two, that's our ARP, that's American Recovery Plan, that's that counselor's grant, that's new revenue into the district. Seven eighty-eight is SIR care money, that's a little bit that's left over in that account. Seven eighty-nine, if you remember, we called it the incentive grant last year, there's about four thousand left in that grant. And then SIR two and three at the bottom, those are the amounts out of those grants that we put over into general fund. We put four hundred thousand, as we talked about on Esther and the Dees last time, four hundred thousand out of SIR two into general fund, and seven hundred thousand of SIR three money into general fund. And then you can see the, the same over in child nutrition. If you look real quick, three thirty-two and three thirty-five, that's money set aside, that's what we budget for either cash in lieu of insurance or to purchase insurance for employees that are funded in child nutrition. If you look down at seven sixty-three, this is money set aside to fund breakfast, seven sixty-four lunch, seven sixty-six summer, and seven sixty-nine, that third meal that we serve after school of elementary. By the way, that third meal, we're serving about a hundred and forty meals a day in that third meal. So this is our budget for FY twenty-two, if anyone has any questions.
Notice the building fund's got five million dollars structure we can add again. Is that part of the SIR money? Is that seven ninety-three and seven ninety-five, four, eight back on the general budget?
Right, I'm sorry, Kenny, I skipped over that. That zero, zero, zero is that nine eighty-seven or whatever plus what we anticipate in Ed Forum this year. Now, a good point on that, remember we talked about the Building Equalization Fund, which should add, should about double what we bring in. That's what it looked like when they estimated that new law last year. So this is money to bring all schools in Oklahoma up to the average, which we were below in Ed Forum for building fund. So we should, we're looking at what we have plus about a hundred and eighty, a hundred and ninety, and then probably another hundred and eighty, let's say, in that Building Equalization Fund. And we're supposed to, that fund, we're supposed to get in two payments, one January, February, somewhere right in there, and the next one in May to June. So that's going to up that amount probably by about a hundred and eighty thousand if estimates are correct. So that's that amount. Seven ninety-three is our award for SIR two minus that four hundred thousand we put into building fund, just in case we needed it. I mean, we put in general fund just in case we needed it. And then that seven ninety-five is our award in SIR three minus that seven hundred for learning loss down in general fund. And then if you add those together, it's four point nine, and then you can add, so that should be total for this year of a little over five. And we don't intend on spending that.
Any more questions?
We're accepting the, that, budget, two thousand and twenty-two budget. We're accepting twenty-one, twenty-two operational budget as presented. Thank you.
I can accept the report to accept the twenty-twenty-one operational budget with consideration to adopt the twenty-one, twenty-two operational budget as presented. Kenny?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
This time we move on to action topic B, discussion of possible board action to pass the twenty, twenty-two annual school election resolution.
Okay, and this resolution is what we do every year, and it, it tells us that the election will be on February the eighth, two thousand and twenty-two, only if three or more candidates file for a, the Board of Education position. The general election shall be on April the fifth, twenty twenty-two, if only two candidates file for a position scheduled to be on the ballot, or for a position on the ballot for an unexpired term, or if no candidate in the Board of Education primary election receives more than fifty percent of the votes. Board, down on board member position, the voter shall elect a board member for board position number two, which is a five-year term. It talks about the qualifications for candidates for office. And then on the next page, it talks about, then the qualifications, criminal records, the next paragraph qualification, you can't run if you have, you're employed with the school or have a relative that's employed at the school. Then in the third paragraph, it talks about the training required for a board member. And then lastly, down at the bottom, voter eligibility, what it is for a voter to be eligible to vote. And we just need to vote to approve that resolution for this year.
Make a motion to approve the twenty-two, twenty-two resolution. Say.
Motion, make my Kenny's, and I'm sorry, Megan, second by Brad, to accept the board action to pass twenty-two annual school election resolution. Megan?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer, please.
Yes.
Yes. This time we move on to action topic C, consideration and removal of Julie Ellis as a designated signer and authorizing Melissa Jennings as a designated signer of the First National Treasure of Kansas.
And that just customary, Julie Ellis leaving the district, taking her off, and then adding Ms. Jennings in that group. Make motion for Julie Ellis as a designated signer, authorizing Melissa Jennings as a designated signer of the First National Treasure of Kansas.
I'm sorry. Motion, make my Kenny's, second by Jennifer, to approve Julie Ellis as a designated signer and authorizing Melissa Jennings as a designated signer on the First National Treasure of Kansas. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Suzie, yes. Action topic D, consideration of district gifted talent education plan for twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
And last month, we appointed that committee, Gifted and Talented Committee, and they worked this month during, especially during that in-service day, and to redo our gifted and talented plan. And one of the things, your gifted and talented students, first of all, your, any student that you have that scores in the ninety-seventh percentile or above on intelligence testing, usually, a lot of times in the past, we'd use the COGAT test in order to measure that. All of those students meet the requirements, but then your district sets requirements, and you can, up to eight percent of the population can attain gifted and talented status under that, under those requirements. So they worked, they worked a long day to kind of redo this, to kind of deal with those scenarios where one of our students would fit under not only gifted but talented in order to fit those requirements. So we want to submit this as a gifted and talented plan.
Make a motion that we approve the district gifted and talented education plan for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Say.
Motion, make my Brad, second by Megan, to accept the district gifted and talented education plan for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Brad?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Yes. Action topic E, consideration of approvals of revisions of the following policies. Number one, lead policy, full-time employees, BEC subsection B, personal lead. And number two, personnel lead, BEC dash R three.
Okay, and what makes me sleep good at night is running things like this by our school attorneys. So after visiting Mr. Drummond, our school, our school representative attorney, he's, and I sent this to him and let him look over it. He had one change that he recommended, and we did that. And kind of where we're at on that, and you're going to have two links on yours, and we'll talk about that to the document. We've had discussion, and our employees have been very good about, you know, we have a personal business lead policy. I'm going to go out on a limb, they don't really care for it totally, but they, they went along with it, and they've done good about going along with it. And, but they're very aware that other schools have a little better policy, and it gives a little more leeway on personal lead. And I think this kind of hits it in the middle. I didn't want to go back to our old policy where you just come in, request a day, and you get it, here we go. And I thought we needed a little more accountability than that. So your first, I'm going to say link on your policy there, is just the, the page on personal lead where it talks about sick leave, personal leave, bereavement, and so forth. It just had a little bit of wording there that needed to be changed. But the main, the meat of it is on the second link, and that kind of breaks it down. And what, what we're proposing is personal days to be a three-tiered system, where when someone requests a personal day, first of all, we would filter it through personal business lead, and that's what we've been doing by the last two years. If you look at it, emergency business transactions, IRS reviews, those types of things we talked about before there. I did take out of that, attend a business convention with spouse, but if you can see, that's the only thing struck there. If, if it meets that criteria, you would be granted that personal business day with no loss of faith, just like we do right now. If you look to the second page, number two, if it doesn't fit personal business, then we filter it through personal non-business lead. And pretty much down below, it's just showing those bullet points, not what would be granted, but what things don't fit under this. And we take this directly from our, one of our old policies. You can't use a personal day for pleasure trips or vacations, seeking other employment and so on. And then under personal non-business lead, we put back in that prior statement where you can't take personally, personal non-business lead, first week of school, the last week of school, right before or after a holiday, those types of things. So if it doesn't fit the criteria for personal business, it would filter down to personal non-business lead. If granted, there would be a fee with that, instead of a full day's loss pay, it would be for certified, a seventy-dollar fee, and then for non-certified, a fifty-dollar fee. If it doesn't fit that, then it goes down to number three. If it's granted, then it would be a full day's loss pay. So that gives us a little more leeway on personal days. I think this goes a long way. And as I say, when, if we show due diligence and we're not petitioning to do this, but we see it, and we say, hey, we, we think we can do a little better here. And the teachers have said work, but I think, and, and staff, but I think this is due diligence, good faith, to do something for our faculty and staff that's, and then it's my job and the principal's job to enforce it and to make sure we're doing it right.
Is the primary difference between this policy and what we're currently doing?
What we're currently doing right now takes number two out of the equation. So if it fits personal business lead, it's, it's granted, no loss of pay, just like on number one. If it's not, it's a full day's loss pay. We're trying to add, add this in there, that they can take a personal day, it's not going to be a vacation or any of that, but if they need a personal day, then they can take that day. It may not fit the criteria for personal business, but they can take it and pay that seventy-dollar fee for a teacher, and then that's net, net neutral for the district as far as it comes.
So that second tier is just the principal's judgment?
No, it would just, it would need to, it can't fall into one of these bullet points.
These four here.
Right. Or, or the, it can't be first week of school, last week of school, before, after a holiday, or during, like this week, during fall break of the week, which is a short week, which you could very easily find a reason to take these three days, you know, that type of thing.
You took out business on everything, but all you've said is business. You removed business from the, from what we want to prove, that all you've said was these are business days, that they can take, use for their home closing, those kind of things. And we remove business from everything in the policy. Is that?
No.
I guess I'm wondering.
On the first page, on the first page that we talked about, that I said, this is kind of where it's talking about what is sick lead, what is personal lead, what is bereavement. We took business out of that.
Yeah.
Because when we're talking about this, we're talking about personal lead.
Okay.
That's an umbrella statement.
Okay.
For there. Now, when we talk about your, your, your next two pages, now we're breaking personal lead down into personal business lead, personal non-business lead, and full loss of pay.
We're just talking about those three days, right?
Correct.
The same three days.
You still only get.
You just get the three days, right?
And that is exactly, Mr. Drummond wanted us to clarify that. You don't get six days.
That's what I was getting at.
Right.
We get six days, we're just getting the three days, so.
Personal business, whatever.
Look right before.
I guess I'm not.
No, no, no free business, not free personal.
Yeah. It's highlighted in yours where it says, "A requested personal day will fall into one of the following three categories. Personal day request will be filtered through the following sequence in numerical order. All an employee will be granted a total of three days personal lead to meet the criteria of categories one and/or two."
Okay. And I guess I'm still confused on why it was just three days. We got three days for the whole school year. And why do we, why is it that important? I mean, to police it this much, I guess.
Seems complicated.
Is it seems complicated for the principals themselves? I mean, if the teacher tells you that they've got to take off for extension study, I mean, in good faith, you'd think that they're saying, okay, I'm not, I'm going to take this day off and go sign a loan. I'm not going to get on a plane, go to Jamaica or something.
Right.
So, I mean, this, it just seems too complicated.
Well, what we get is, we're, we're pretty stringent on personal business. If we go through, and Melissa brings me one, it's, it's okay. This is a good reason for a personal day, because you don't get vacation days.
Yeah.
So, but it doesn't fit personal business. Okay, now, I'm going to go by, by those criteria for a personal business day right now. If it doesn't fit that, I have to say, okay, I can grant that, but it's going to be a full day's loss pay. I want to put a thing in where, and that's number two, where I say, this doesn't fit personal business as is in the rule. But you know what? You're not taking a vacation, you're not doing any of those, so I can grant it as a personal day.
It just says the criteria for how it's paid, whether it's being, being paid through them paying it, or letting, or the fee, just kind of sets the criteria for that.
Right. And, and here's, here's the thing. And when this was changed, we used to have personal days, and I'm going to say, as a building principal, sometimes it was a little aggravating, because I could get a, I could wake up, not as a principal, I'm talking to Dick, but somebody, an employee, I could wake up, say, I don't really want to go to work today, I'm going to call in, take a personal. Well, if I, they can still do that and say, I'm going to do this, but there's going to be a fee, because before, if I did that, it cost the district seventy dollars, or it cost my subs. But if I do that now, it's net, it's net zero cost to the district, and I have to say, do I want to pay seventy dollars, or do I want to get up and go to work? That's what, I don't want to get back to, I think all this day took personal days, you know? I don't want to get back to that. But I think there's a middle ground, and I think there is a, is a cause for, if you need, if IRS says we're auditing you, and you've got to go meet with the auditor, I don't think you should be docked. I mean, I don't think you should lose anything, that's a personal business day by definition.
You got people that are using the system, that's a, that's a whole different story than what you're talking about. You got people that you, that call in, like you're saying, I just don't want to go to work today, I've signed a contract to work to teach these kids, I just don't want to do it, then that's a whole different thing you're talking about. To me, that's, you're talking about somebody who's just collecting responsibilities and coming to work.
Well.
And all of us in here have got, well, we've got employees that, and you do, that we depend on to be there every day to do their job, like you.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I, I guess I'm just kind of, it just seems, you know, I mean, I'm good with it, it just seems too much. If you've got good people coming in, doing their job, then they're going to do that no matter what. You probably, this probably affects ten percent of the workforce probably.
It'd probably be more than that, because you get, you get somebody that, if you say, I, I have to think of something, okay, I need to take a personal day, and, and here's the reason. And right now, they have to, some people have to lose, I don't know how much a day to be able to go do that, because we've got a pretty strict personal business that applies. It's very strict, and our employees know that. I mean, how many, and my guidance before was, you can't do it because it's gifted, okay? Well, and when I have a teacher and they say, man, Mr. Morgan, I know jinx, I know sable salt, I know these and they, they don't do that. And I said, well, all I know, here's our guidance, and if you don't know, it's ignorance. If you know, you still do it anyway, you're, you're doing something unlawful or whatever. So I just had Mr. Drummond on the phone over something else, and I said, by the way, this still bothers me, because I, I won't go into why it bothers me, but it bothers me. And I said, what about this? He said, no, employees are granted three personal days. Now, it says, and this is what I knew already in the statute, that you can charge up to what substitutes pay you for them to be gone on that day. And that kind of does away with frivolous, doesn't it? And so I think we need to come down a little bit and have a little better allowance, but if we, in my mind, if we have a hundred and fifty employees, and every one of them takes one personal day a year, and the cost is all back on the district, that's a lot of money. But if, if they, okay, we feel like you need a little more leeway on what we categorize as a personal day, but we, we don't feel like it should be a huge cost to the district. That's my, that's where I'm at. I want to get, I want to be as, hate to use the word liberal, but I want to be as bad as we can on the, the policy without going to where I don't think we need to go, we just grant, you know?
I guess you've got some people that don't take any person, but you'll have some, a group, that takes every day, every, every day of it, and then some. So, you know, that's the group there that you're trying to target on the same, to reel them in a little bit more, where they can be more accountable for what's going on. And, and I'm good with it, I mean, I'm not, I'm not, I guess I'm just looking at it from my point, and if I depend on these people to come to work, and they don't want to come to work, then can we get people that want to come? You know, that's what my.
Well, that's when I, that's when I say, whatever policy we have, it's not even the principal's job, it's my job to filter that and make sure that we're going by the rules we've set forward. But I want those rules to be fair. And I know that's what we want, and so I'm, I'm not going to try to make it like everybody wants it to be, that probably just give us three days, no charge, whatever. But I think there's a little accountability in this way, and, and I think that that was probably the premise when we changed it probably a couple of years ago, was we need to do away with some issues. I'm saying that's my job. If somebody's trying to take a personal day for the wrong reasons, it's my job to filter that. I'm not going to lay that off on anybody, because the principals are basically going to okay it and then see what I do. And that's what I've asked them to do, because it's a little bit, is, is this worthy of a, you know, if it's.
Close.
And I don't want four people making that decision, one person.
Even on that, they should recommend you corrects choice.
Oh, yeah.
You know what I mean?
But it's always going to be me.
They, yeah, they should say, you know, listen, this ain't right, I mean, you guys.
Yeah, and if it's, if it's, they're going to go to Florida to the beach, they're going to say no.
Yeah.
The ones they're going to pass on to me that, that I'm kind of the bug, is going to be those that are, I'm not sure I'm going to send this on, you see.
Make a motion to approve revision of the following policy, lead policy, full-time employees, D E C subsection B, and personal lead, D E C R three.
Motion made by Kenny, second by Jennifer, to approve the revision of the following policies, number one, lead policy, full-time employees, D E C subsection B, personal lead, and number two, personal lead dash D E C dash R three. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer? Yes. David?
Yes.
And Susie? Yes. Action topic G, consideration of the rule of the S C C L A, cause for cause, T-shirt fundraising benefiting Jason Miracle's.
And you guys, I think, had this, it was an email sent by Ms. Quick, that they were in here earlier, and this was the first thing they presented on, was cause for cause, I don't say that, cause for a cause. And this is just, they didn't have this, and I told her, I didn't think the board would have any problem with that, helping other people and animals. So, but they're just asking to do that, and we're recommending to allow them to do that. That's why they didn't have their order forms out yet, they were waiting on it.
I think the community serves to get kids in home and that, that's.
You bet.
So, you know, they said that it would benefit both the shelters, but this, on this it always says Jason Miracle's.
Well, I might have claimed ignorance on that.
Did you get the address? Did you have to hear him say?
Yes, I did.
And this was, this was a little more casual, are you looking at the email?
Uh-huh.
And that was probably a little more casual than, than.
I think that the rescue.
She sent that on September thirteenth, about a month ago, so they might have got, you know, with the others, and since then. This is a little outdated.
Okay.
So make a motion to approve the S C C L A cause for cause, T-shirt fundraising benefiting Jason Miracle's on the shelter.
Motion made by Brett, second by Kenny, to approve the S C C L A cause for cause, T-shirt fundraising benefiting Jason Miracle's in the shelter. Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer? Yes. David?
Yes.
And Susie? Yes. Action topic G, consideration to contract with Aptige to build and manage the school website, mobile app, and school messaging for the twenty-twenty-two school year.
Okay, and you have a hand, handout online with this, and what this is, is right now we contract with Gabber Communication for our website, and then we use School Messenger for, you probably get the text, little small text, and, yeah, I always need about three more letters on my message, but we've used those, those cost us, I believe it's about eighty-nine hundred a year between the two. And this is Apt- Aptige, Apt, I've said it all week, Aptige, Aptige. And Aptige has a website, they offer a website, they offer the messaging, just like School Messenger does, very similar to that, won't be exactly like it. The thing we like about Aptige is that it also offers an app, which is real quick, and something kind of fingerprint, fingertips of parents and students and everyone, where you can just go on very quickly, then just like you would your, your Facebook or whatever, and check your schedules, athletic, all of that stuff, the click of an app. And not me, but I've got Mike Higgins and Lori Moore, who teaches our media class, them to sit in on these presentations, and they kind of got into the work, inner workings of it, and they said it's a lot more user-friendly. And so, as you know, we've just come a million miles in our website, just keeping it alive. I, you, two years ago, I'd go to someone's website, it hadn't been updated for two years, and now it's a must, communication is a must. So what we would like to do is go away from Gabber and School Messenger, and take all of that to Apt- Aptige. And what that's going to do is, if you look on page five, has a cost sheet of that, it will, there will be a little changing over difference. Now, we've already purchased our Gabber website for the year, but in a way that's good, because we need to transition slowly over to Aptige. And then, but we'll be, we haven't paid for School Messenger yet, so we'll add the added of using the message system and the app. And if we approve it, they're going to, they've already done. and the, the app, and if we approve it, they're gonna, they've already done some preliminary, I signed a document, I think it's in here, but it says if the board doesn't vote to approve, that all of that's going to void, but they've kind of done some preliminary kickoff stuff, uh, and then we would do training, uh, this Thursday to kind of get it off the ground and to get rolling, if we vote to do that. It has a setup fee and some of that, but what you're talking about on that drill share on the schedule of pricing, that's gonna be our annual cost, ninety-three hundred and forty dollars, as compared to about eighty-three hundred, if you talk about the cost for Gabber for the website, for School Messenger for messaging, and then no app. So, we just wanna recommend to transfer this over to Aptige, uh, at this point, and, uh, go with them for the remainder of the year.
That app is probably gonna be a good deal.
Uh, I think so, and I think it's, it's huge now, that we've, we've come to expect communication, you know, and it's a good thing, the more we can communicate, the less confusion we have, and we want our folks that, that take care of that on a daily messenger, daily basis, to have the best they can have.
Has Mike taken care of this, and he updated everything, who updated our site?
Yeah, he, right now, he keeps our website up to date daily, and, uh, whether it be COVID numbers, whatever, cancellations, and, uh, we have several throughout the district that can do School Messenger, but Mike and Lori will kind of head up the website, we'll, once again, we've got several gonna train Thursday if we can, and on the messaging side of it, and then he'll also kind of at least start a, let's see, he'll be in that training, and, but he'll also be in charge of the app starting out, so, once again, great to have Mr. Huggins.
They're doing this one, go, overlap some?
They will, well, this, the website part of this will take over for what we use Gabber for, but we'll do it as the year goes on, so that people don't just, they're not just looking for the feedback, but it'll use, they'll allow us to use the same Stigler, at Stigler P S dot com.
Some segments on?
Yeah, I mean, I'm sorry, don't mind.
So there's no fees, if, if, if they can cancel the Gabber, we're not gonna cancel anything?
We're gonna carry out.
Carry out the contract.
Right, and we're not up yet on Messenger, so, and it's a little bit of cost to switch over, but we just think we need to be with the best that Mike tells us.
Make motion that we approve the contract with Aptige to build and manage the school website, mobile app, and School Messenger for the twenty-one twenty-two school year, Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Suzie, yes. Action topic H, consideration of approval to purchase two hundred and sixty Chromebooks to be funded with an emergency connectivity grant through E-Rate, grant amount for Chromebooks is sixty-six thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars and forty cents.
And if you look at the first page, I believe it is on your, uh, document there, it says total committed, the total grant was a hundred and sixty-six thousand one hundred and fifty-four dollars, uh, we're probably not gonna use all of that grant, surprisingly, um, if you look at about page four on that document, it shows you the three categories that that grant pertains to, and the first one, you know, see that, uh, service provider, C D W Government, L C C, L L C, for sixty-six thousand, that's what we're asking for now, we've already, we've received that sixty-six thousand dollars through that E-Rate grant already, and we just need to spend it on what we applied for, are those Chromebooks. The second and third, that's the connectivity that goes along with that, as far as hotspots, and, um, the service for those hotspots, they put in the grant, I believe it was two hundred and sixty hotspots, we've, we've ordered and started with fifty, we probably won't use that, especially if we don't have any big outlets or anything, so, we probably won't use near on the second and third category there, because we're not going to afford a hundred and sixty if we don't need, but that's a great grant for us, and a good opportunity for those Chromebooks.
Make a motion, we approve purchase two hundred and sixty Chromebooks to be funded with emergency connectivity grant through E-Rate, grant amount for Chromebooks is sixty-six thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars and forty cents.
Motion number Brett, seconded by Jennifer, to approve purchase two hundred and sixty Chromebooks to be funded with an emergency connectivity grant through E-Rate, grant amount for Chromebooks is sixty-six thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars and forty cents, Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Suzie, yes. Action topic I, consideration to accept order check, bids on approving awning projects at the high school and middle school campuses.
Okay, on this, what we had them do is they broke these bids down in, uh, four categories, which in hindsight, one of them we'll talk about, they did, uh, bid A, B, C, and D. Bid A, uh, and I have on those, you'll see like bid A, middle school retro roof, as shown on sheets A one hundred, A one oh one, and so forth, and, um, we've received two bids, and, uh, we received one for two hundred and fifty-four thousand, one for two hundred and twenty-two, the two hundred and twenty-two's M R C, uh, M R C's the ones that just put the roof on K T C here in Stigler, and did a very good job, I talked to April and Shelley Free about their experience with them, and were very pleased, and, um, so, what that is, for the most part, is that fifth, that, uh, middle school gym, that fifth grade classroom is a flat roof, has a lot of leaking issues over the years, and is to put a retrofit sloped roof on that area, and, uh, I have this document here, if anyone wants to see, it just goes into detail what's included there, uh, A one hundred down to A one oh four on these pages, but it's kind of the specifics of that, and, uh, bid B is middle school overhang extensions and associated work, as shown on sheet A two hundred, A two hundred just basically shows us an aerial shot of the middle school, and we, I think we looked at this a few, about a month ago, and, I don't know, you've seen that, here's an aerial shot of the middle school, here's the front, and we would start up here at the office and bring this awning out, and that awning would go around the circumference of the building, and with the associated concrete work that would come out even with the, with the awning, and, is that eight foot, eight foot extended out there? And all the associated work that goes along with that, as far as the concrete work and things to make that happen, this makes, we don't have a large, a wide enough walkway cover for people that are making that track from the parking lot to the office, and then this area up here, when they're waiting on buses, it's raining, and then that, uh, toward the playground, when it's, you know, it's raining outside, that they can go out, we'll have, probably have tables, picnic tables, that kind of thing there, where they don't have to just shut up inside all the time, so, uh, with extra money, that's called help for learning space.
That's eight foot, you say eight foot on?
Eight foot wide all the way there. So, that is bid, uh, B. Bid C is at the high school, and that is covered area and associated work as shown on A three hundred, we looked at this up on the big screen, and that is, if you remember, putting the cover in front of the high school, and he has in the plan where we, that's separate in case they're settling on either one, and, uh, it goes out to the existing sidewalk in the front, and then over even, if you, if I'm looking outside, the, up the windows, I come around here, and you know where the memorial is around the corner, it comes over even with that wall, and then all of the concrete work underneath, and, uh, everything that goes along with that, removing the trees, moving the flagpole, uh, all of those things that go along with that.
What's it amazing?
Uh, you probably don't remember correctly, I've got it right here.
It's probably...
It's fifty-eight going from the office out toward the road. By sixty, or fifty nineteen, going side to side.
Sixty by sixty.
Right. Right, fifty-eight by fifty nineteen, or sixty, two inches. And so, that's, uh, bid C, now what, the confusion, if you look, and I, I'm gonna recommend to back up just a hair, on, on bid D, on the second page, I don't even like the way, for various reasons, this is, uh, put in there, but this is base bid D, all remaining work shown in these bid documents, and most of that, if you look, if anybody wants to look at it, it's on... It's on page A six hundred, and this is just talking about, uh, things like, uh, on all of the buildings, replacing all the screws and, and, uh, sealing them, um, downspouts, what I call roof jacks or roof penetration flashing, uh, we have over here, where we're, putting cover from the cafeteria over to the fifth grade building, and then, uh, cover from the main entrance at the middle school over to the back door of the cafeteria, that's a part of the extra, uh, all of the, uh, bases for our HVAC on these buildings, uh, at the high school, we've got, if you go from the office down toward the family consumer science room, you know, that's an annex down there, we've got a lot of leakage where those, those two meet, and so, to fix that, where those two meet, to fix that leakage right there, um, then we've got to put over the existing roof in the back of the library to put new metal down, uh, to put new metal over that slanted roof in, in the back of the library, and then to wrap that annex on the north side of the high school, the north end, you know, where you can drive by there and turn and go toward the baseball field, you can see the individual blocks, uh, coming through, you can see those, we don't think we'll ever fix that, where that's not what happened with the way that that, that's constructed, cement blocks where the rest of that building is different, and so the proposal is to wrap that annex in metal, in a metal exterior, down there. So that other includes that, but a big bulk of that, that four hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars is, we talked about wrapping the gym in metal, but I've kind of reconsidered a lot of that, as far as, when I go down to the gym, and I went up there yesterday and walked around that thing, I don't, I would like to reconsider that part of it, 'cause I think we can do something a lot more reasonable to the gym, as far as that exterior, so, what I would recommend tonight, if okay, would be to recommend to approve bid A, B, and C, but not D, and what we'll do to make up for that on those, we've got the gym in there, and then all of this extra work, is to come back and not approve D, and then come back and have them do a change order, including this extra work beside the gym, and resubmit that next month.
Do you have the total, one point two million?
Well, if you take that one point two million, subtract that four hundred and eighty-six thousand off of it, right.
And are these?
And then, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, are these, uh, is this all the same bid, or is it multiple bids here from, I'm trying to figure out, do you have two companies?
There's two companies, but each company gave a bid on each subbid, the four.
Only gave?
No, I'm sorry.
Yeah, he just gave one bid on the first one.
It was on their, it was on their form, he only bid on the retro roof, and Nick was higher, and we know that M R C's done a good job at K T C.
He had a hundred and twenty days or something like that, to finish the work, and this, this company here says sixty.
Right.
Big difference every time.
On D, it was a hundred and fifty.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah, for all of that.
For all of that.
And then, on the, the one that bid on everything down there, he, they've done it handwriting, mechanical alternate, what that is, is they, at the, where we're doing that retro roof at the middle school gym, fifth grade building, there's five A C units, and that is, they wanted, if we wanted them to replace those five units while they're in the process, but I think, uh, Mr. Pemberton and I agree that we use HVAC systems until they quit, I mean, we've got, still got, I don't know how much life, but we've still got life in those units, so we're not interested in that mechanical alternate.
None of this pertains to the grade school, just the high school?
Correct.
You have more coming up for that, or?
Yes, we've got...
Planning on trying to let on to the grade school?
Well, and that's something that we're gonna have to talk about in the near future, and we have right now, I've got, uh, Michael Riley working, and he sent me a rough draft on four proposals to narrow down for grade school, and two of them involve that side, two of them involve up here, but we thought that part of the, we've got that one point four, and I'm kind of looking at that to try to help at the little school, high school, try right now not to touch that two point six, in case we can use that for improvements at the elementary.
I guess, thank.
Of those.
Just extra money, rather. Just extra money.
Is this it?
It's a lot of extra money, isn't it?
People saying that.
Yeah, you start talking seven hundred and fifty thousand, they're like getting nervous.
Yeah.
They're just getting nervous on that.
Those buses weren't that much, were they?
Yeah, no, huh.
I understand.
No, I mean, I, it just seems like an enormous amount of money for a sixty by sixty top, you know what I mean, it's basically just a shed top, three hundred thousand dollars. I mean, you know, I mean, I don't know, maybe...
They're gonna take out the trees, kinda?
Yeah, I mean, I...
Or concrete?
Built to protect the kids, you know, I mean, it's, I'm sure it's not something you can wanna build on, your place is stacked hay under, I'm sure it's dirtier than that, you know, I hope it is, anyway.
That's lucky with the people.
Yeah.
Do you have anything to add to that? Let's fix my roots.
Let's fix my roofs.
Fix the roofs. Yeah, let's be.
And that's the way, that's, uh, and I would say probably, what they talked about was the, the hardest to get was the framing for the, the beds and awnings.
Cause it's all out of I-beams, instead of just square tubing. But, right now, any of your manufacturer, that manufacturing it, they're looking at six months to a year out on getting a manufactured building. It's two, is what they're telling me.
And this has, uh, this is fully enclosed soffit underneath. And, uh, will be lighting inside there. So, that, there's an added cost, the lighting, dirt all over mess and all that.
You know, I guess I'm kind of like Kenny, it's like, if you've got leaky roofs, you obviously need to fix those. But, it looks like when you're, and I, and I know that money has to be allocated in certain ways and you want to have total flexibility. But it feels like you want to writing somewhat aesthetic value things to the middle school, high school, and the grade schools phone, you know what I mean? Just, and, and I, I don't know, I don't, I'm not saying we shouldn't take care of the other things too, but I just don't. It seems, it seems like the priorities, the, the priorities are somewhere else in my mind, I guess, but I don't know.
Well, that's why we did it in four. We can take, we can take any of it, or none of it, or all of it. I wouldn't suggest taking all of it, I'd like to go back on D and redo that.
They also, never we, you know, tried to run a bond issues before, they always, you know, people would always say, well, you know, what about the high school, what about the middle school? They need attention too. So, you know, if we can show that, that we are putting, you know, some money into those two buildings, cause they, I mean, if you've driven around the high school, which I know you have. You know, you see the structure on the outside, I mean, aesthetically, it's, it needs, there's a lot of work that needs to be done. Cause those are, you know, forty-year old buildings too, fifty-year old, sixty-year old buildings too. So, that was something, you know, that maybe, you know, we could say, you know, you know, we, we, we have put some money into the middle school, we have put some money into the high school. You know, and now we need to address to know our grade school.
That's what I was saying, we wouldn't put two hundred and eighty-five thousand to an awning on the front. But we've got leaking rooms on the back and other things that are leaking. So, we're gonna do this first. I guess that's what I'm with, I'm with you, we're not really fixing anything with this three hundred thousand dollars. We're adding something new to the front of the building. I guess that's where I'm at, I mean, I.
Now, we're doing it all at the same time.
The roofs, there is.
Okay, the roof, this is two hundred and eighty-five thousand.
Well, I'm not gonna say literally we're doing it all at the same time. It's all in the same.
This, this two hundred and eighty-five thousand was just for the awning, though, it's not for fixing. But we've got four hundred thousand or whatever, we're not even approving it yet. Right, is this gonna be done next summer? Is that when you're planning on building?
What do you talk about?
All this work, is it gonna be done next summer?
No, this is stuff that, now, I can't tell you exact when they get started. But, this is something that as soon as they can get going. And these are all projects that we were guaranteed that were student print. That they can work on during the school year, we wouldn't have to vacate here. And, uh, these are crews that work around students and that kind of thing. Um, what, through all this, and what I, what I meant on the four hundred and eighty-six thousand, the D, is that we don't approve that tonight. And then come back and have them do a change order on that one, really taking out the gym part. With the exception, only thing at the gym to leave in, there's, if you visualize it, on the front, there's two squares, two rectangles that go up on each side. Those are flat roofs into slanted roofs on those, cause those leak down into, uh, those bathrooms. And bathrooms mainly, and we need to take care of those. So, we were gonna put, uh, pitched roofs on top of those flats. Now, other than that, it's wrapping and that kind of thing. And, but also in that, in that D, is replacing all your screws, your flashing, your, all this stuff I mentioned on this page. Those, those covered walkways, that kind of thing. All of that's lumped together in D. Number one, I would like to rethink the gym again, and when it's four hundred.
Yeah, I'm not questioning any of this, does it mean that?
Sure.
I'm just, I guess, I don't wanna be, that we're putting all this outside for everyone to see, we still have problems on other things. So, D is going to take care of all the other things that go on as far as what leaking roofs and the gym roofs leaking. The high school, that little annex part you was talking, this leak. So, it is going to fix all the leaks that we're talking about, correct, and that's what we're discussing. So, this stuff here is, it'll all get fixed in this, when we approve that other part of that.
Right, what we'll do is come back, they'll do a change order that has all this in it, without the gym. Still has the little roofs, but other than that, nothing at the gym right now. But, we can't, we can't approve this and not the gym tonight, because it's all lumped together. So, we'll come have them do a change order that involves only this stuff. And then we'll bring that change order back to the November fourth, when we get it approved. And that's the only legal way. And, but, if, uh, if we, and it, it's fine, if we wanna hold off on any of it, this is the time to do it.
Are we under any kind of time constraints, as far as money and spending it, or?
I wouldn't say, right now, we are. We, we've got some on S R two till September twenty-three, till S R three, September twenty-four. So, we've got some time. But, when you get into delays and, we don't know what the future holds, we don't wanna be sitting out there, can't get materials in. But, you can't spend the money when you want to. But, when we made this master plan, I don't know if you've had people come tonight, I'm glad it's here. But, we made it with, I think, we made it with, uh, in mind to, number one thing to fix first was roofs. And, in this plan, we have to, to fix, I'm gonna say at least at the main high school building, at the gym, uh, and the middle school campus. Correct? I don't think we're leaving anything out. To fix all, we're, it's what we're saying we're doing, is to fix all of our leaking problems at those sites. Um, now, we're doing some other things too, but, those are all in this plan. Now, it's just schematics that we have to go back and do the change order, bring it back in up there, so.
Okay, as long as all that, as long as we're not just putting lipstick on a pig, I'm good.
I, I think, I think being the man in the back would free we.
Okay.
But, that is, but, that, that out in front of the high school is not just to lipstick, it's, it's a practical.
Oh, I know, yeah.
I don't know how many, uh, bids they've had me get hold. Cause we need a covered area for those kids to hang out, when it's cold or rainy or whatever.
So, you wanna, you want these three approved?
A, B, C.
I would, A, B, C, and.
What company is it?
MRC.
MRC?
Just reject, reject. Rejecting D.
Rejecting D. Make a motion to approve bids A, B, and C, the company MRC, I'm gonna reject bid D.
Motion made by Kenny, second by Jennifer, to accept A, B, and C with MRC bids, and reject D on the roofing awning projects at the high school, middle school, and the sixth. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie?
Yes.
Get about every layer now, I bet.
Yeah, we got all that though, too.
This time we move on to executive session. I propose executive session to discuss, discuss and act upon following business as authorized by Oakland statute title twenty-five. Section three oh seven B, one and seven of the Oakland meeting act. Number one, discussion and vote by board to affirm or not affirm the termination of David Maddox from his employment with the Stigler School District. In hesitation, at findings of fact upon which the decision is based. And number two, discussion to employ a high school custodian for the remainder of the twenty-one twenty-two school year.
And once we main do the session.
Motion made by Kenny, second by Jennifer, to convene an executive session at eight forty PM. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer? Brad?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie?
Yes.
I'll say it. Motion made by Kenny, second by Jennifer, at eight fifty AM, to return the board to open session. Uh, Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie? Yes. Members present during executive session were David Higgins, Brad Moore, Kenny Whitson, Jennifer Turner, Susan White. David Morgan Superintendent was also present, no votes or motions were made or taken.
I just need to start. Uh, motion, I make a motion, uh, I move that the board, A, affirm the termination of David Maddox from his employment with the Stigler Public School District. And B, that the following findings of fact upon which the decision is based be recited. One, in a letter postmarked September twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one, notice letter, superintendent informed Mr. Maddox that he was recommending that he be terminated from his employment with the school district. The notice letter advised Mr. Maddox of the cause of his termination and the grounds supporting the listed cause. The notice letter also advised Mr. Maddox of his rights, including the right to a public hearing regarding his proposed termination before the Board of Education. And if he requested the hearing in writing within ten working days of the postmark of the notice letter. Two, Mr. Maddox did not submit a written request for a hearing regarding his proposed termination before the Board of Education within ten working days of the date of the postmark on the letter, the notice letter. Three, Mr. Maddox has waived his right to a hearing before the Board of Education regarding his proposed termination. Four, the cause and grounds set out in the legal notice are deposed by the preponderance of evidence and the significant grounds for the termination of Mr. Maddox. Five, Mr. Maddox was properly terminated. Thank you.
Second.
Motion made by David, and second by Brad, to affirm the termination of David Maddox from his employment with Stigler School District. In res- 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 hesitation, at findings of fact upon which the decision is based. I move for the board, A, affirm the termination of David Maddox from his employment with the Stigler School District. And B, that the following findings of fact upon which the decision is based be recited. Number one, in the letter postmarked December twenty-second, twenty-one, a notice letter, superintendent informed Mr. Maddox that he was recommending that he be terminated from his employment with the school district. The notice letter advised Mr. Maddox of the cause of his termination and the grounds supporting the listed cause. The notice letter also advised Mr. Maddox of his rights, including his right to a hearing regarding his proposed termination before the Board of Education. If he requested the hearing in writing within ten working days of the postmark on the notice letter. Number two, Mr. Maddox did not submit a written request for a hearing regarding his proposed termination before the Board of Education within ten working days of the date of the postmark on the notice letter. Number three, Mr. Maddox has waived his right to a hearing before the Board of Education regarding his proposed termination. Number four, the cause and grounds set out in the notice letter are supported by a preponderance of the evidence and are sufficient grounds for the termination of Mr. Maddox. Number five, Mr. Maddox was properly terminated. David?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie? That's right. Would you like to make a motion that we employ Sharon Wright as the high school custodian for the remainder of the twenty-one twenty-two school year?
Second.
Motion made by David, second by Brad, to employ Sharon Wright as high school custodian for the remainder of the twenty-one twenty-two school year. Uh, Jennifer?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie? We're watching the business, seeing the business.
Make a motion, adjourn.
Motion made by David, second by Jennifer, at nine oh two PM, adjourn. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.